City Council Committee on Ordinances and Legislation will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kadeem? Counselor Dionne?
Here.
Counselor Lee?
Here.
Counselor Pereira?
Here.
Sheila Libbey-Laboe?
Here. Counselor Kadeem is running late, he'll be joining us shortly. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item one is citizens input. Do we have any emailed citizens input?
We have none.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak at citizens input? Item two is minutes of the April 20th, 2021 meeting.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dionne. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item three is a proposed ordinance, traffic handicap parking, referred May 11th.
Motion to adopt handicap.
Second.
In an emergency preamble?
Second.
Motion to adopt with emergency preamble made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Lee. Any discussion? We are inserting on item three, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need two votes, Madam Clerk?
Yes, you should have all readings with the emergency preamble.
Motion to pass through all readings would be appropriate.
Yep.
Second.
Motion to pass through all readings made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dionne. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item four is proposed ordinance, traffic miscellaneous, referred May 11th. Item four is a stop sign, which relates to stop intersections designated the following: Wall Street, northbound at the intersection of BD Street. Mrs. Pereira, is this in, putting in a new stop sign?
At Wall and BD. It's been on the wall.
And section two is removing handicap parking. Motion to adopt made by Counsel Pereira. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Lee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. Item five is the proposed ordinance, thin film and plastic bags, referred May 11th, 2021. Attorney Goldberg, would you join us? Mrs. Sahadi, would you join us as well? At the end of the table is fine. Madam Chair, does she need to state her name for the record every time? Attorney Goldberg?
Well, it's good to introduce us here, yes.
Attorney Goldberg.
Attorney Lauren Goldberg. KP Law, just going to hand that.
Counsel for the counsel, Ms. Sahadi. So we had, originally had sent this to the prior corporation counsel, where it sat for quite a while. We then forwarded it to KP Law, and they put a draft ordinance together. This is the same item that members of the Generation Civic Citizen Project came in and spoke to us about. Do you want to just go over the highlights?
Certainly. The first thing that I wanted to point out is that the general, I'm sorry, the Attorney General's office has approved numerous bylaws very similar to this ordinance, so in case that we could get that out of the way, that it is highly likely that it would survive a court challenge. Can never guarantee, but especially with the work the Attorney General has done. Essentially what this would do would limit local establishments from using the plastic bags that most of us think about as checkout bags. Essentially, the reasoning for that is that they do not get recycled, they can't be. So the effort typically is made, and is regulated here, that there won't be any, but that they can sell or otherwise distribute biodegradable bags or reusable bags. Maybe you've seen some from another towns, like CVS has made a different kind of plastic bag. The big issue here is what's exempt, and that's very important because of things essentially that we know as very convenient and very useful. So those are bags used to package loose bulk items, so bags that you would get at the fruit and vegetable aisle, bags used to contain or wrap frozen or fresh food, meat, fish, or poultry. Again, when you go to the meat aisle, you may get your meat wrapped in paper and then put into a plastic bag, and that would also apply to things like flowers or potted plants. And again, they use cellophane oftentimes to round them up. Bags used to contain unwrapped foods, so meals and baked goods, they're still allowed to be, to be the kind of thin film bag that we see, but typically they're not, in my experience. Laundry, dry cleaning, or garment bags, and that's very important because it makes the cost of dry cleaning to be different if they can't use the bags that they are currently using. Bags used to pack garbage, dead animals, pet waste, I think that speaks for itself. And then bags used to transport chemical pesticides or drain cleaning materials, essentially something that we don't want to spill by accident. The bylaw then provides for the ability of the council to promulgate regulations if needed to help implement this proposal, and in some communities, they've wanted to push it out a little bit, or they wanted to change up, you know, some of the definitions a little add and subtract. So that's why that's there. If there's a violation, this is, this provides for noncriminal disposition, which you all have in your ordinances, is section 2-1021, and the amounts that would be utilized are specific amounts set forth in the subsequent, if you look down at subsection D, and that is $100, $200 for the second, $100 for the second, $200 for the third, and $300 for the fourth violation, and any violations thereafter. It is highly likely that current businesses will have backstocks of plastic bags, and so many of these plastic bag ordinances, like the one here, takes effect on a date in the future. So you have, in this draft, it says, until such date, that is 180 days from the date this ordinance takes effect. And during that period of suspension, the city essentially works to educate retail establishments about what is and is not acceptable. And then there's a severability clause, there's a general severability clause in the charter itself, I mean, in the bylaws itself, so you don't have to include it, but you certainly can. And, you know, that's probably consistent with your past practice.
I just have one question. Under the enforcement of regulations, could you just explain the A?
Yeah.
The 90 days?
Yep. It basically says that if there's interest in moving forward faster, then there could be regulations provided that would allow the council to approve the date, kind of moving back. And this is a policy decision, there's nothing that requires this under law. You know, in some communities, they've kind of prepped for it, and they're really ready to go. So if you guys feel as though that's not appropriate at this time, certainly, we could remove that. But I would recommend to enforce and otherwise implement the provisions of this article, period, if you are going to get rid of the 90-day issue, because again, there are issues that arise that you just can't anticipate in an ordinance, and that you don't want to keep revising through the ordinance process. And so this just provides a little flexibility to adapt to those issues.
I think, like you said, the stores will have backstock, and they'll need to get ready for this if we chose to adopt it, and so that 180 days, six months from whenever this is passed through, if it's passed through, seems like a fair amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
You don't want to do what we did with the purple bags. Counsel Pereira?
Lauren, some of what's in here on the bags and the exemptions. So garment bags, those are biodegradable?
No, they're not. The exemptions, all of the exempted materials are allowed to be nonbiodegradable. They're allowed to be just like they are today. So the dry cleaner, for example, doesn't have to figure out a new way to package dry cleaning. And the bags at the grocery, you know, fruit and vegetable aisle can continue to be that very, very thin plastic bag. They're absolutely exempt from this bylaw. And that's part of what the education comments are about, that the council would need to, you know, convey, how does this actually work in reality? And so each of these things that, you know, essentially addresses issues that have arisen in other places, where they said, oh, we don't want that to be part of the ban. And the list has grown. Cities and towns started doing this a while ago, so as the process has kind of gone forward, there's been more things that have been noticed that would be useful, that are very useful in such a way that to change it would be either too expensive or too problematic. And there is, as we've been saying, general agreement among a lot of the bigger companies, that they're very much comfortable with using up the rest of their stock, and same with smaller companies, because they're ordering less, so they can plan in advance in a way that allows them to avoid problems.
Well, that's why you want to do the 180 days instead of 90 days, to give people a chance.
Mm-hmm.
But it seems like, you know, some of these, if you're looking at laundry, dry cleaning bags, et cetera, some of those places, you know, the bags that you'd use at a hotel or whatever, not that we have a lot of hotels in the city, we have one, it's not even opening up. But it seems that we are doing something, but not doing it all.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It's like doing it halfway. If we're going to get rid of material that can't be recycled, then you get rid of it all. But then it appears that you probably had, you know, some hotels or in that went to the state and made a big issue, because it would be costly for them, or, you know, dry cleaning companies or an organization that complained, and they did it for them, you know, they made them exempt, a bunch of them that became exempt. I mean, I can't understand, like even, you know, frozen foods or whatever, they could get a picked the bag and wrap it up and put it in a picked the bag or something else. But again, I think that you got people who have big organizations behind them that will come through, and because they have big organizations, all of a sudden, their product becomes exempt. I hate to see trash bags, you know, these bags that we use, and you refer to them, and you know, stop shopping bags or what have you, because you do see them hanging on trees, and I think it's horrible, and I think it does affect the environment. But I think all of this affects the environment. And if we can put somebody on the moon and put somebody in Mars, you can't come up with a bag for all of this that's biodegradable and that is cost-effective for businesses. So sometimes I just, you know, look at this country and get a little bit frustrated with, you know, the lack of fortitude to do something and do it all the way. The other thing is if there's a fine of $100, $200, $300, and it's a civil fine, who in the city is going to recoup that fine? Is that going to be somebody coming to the city clerk and paying the city clerk? And if that person's paying the city clerk in every fine, there is an appeal process. Who in the city is going to be responsible to hear the appeals? Is it going to be Renee Hawiak, who I believe hears some of the appeals? Is it going to be her? I'd like that to be stated somewhere in the ordinance of how is this going to be monitored? Because a civil appeal, I mean, what teeth do you have in a civil appeal act?
I think all those are very good points. The way that the noncriminal disposition would work for this bylaw, or ordinance, is the same as it worked for any other ordinance. So you have a number of noncriminal disposition, you know, authorizations throughout the ordinances. So this would operate in the same way. Typically, it's useful as a reminder to people that there really can be consequences for not complying, and that in and of itself is supposed to encourage compliance. In addition, it is enough, inconsistent with law, it can't be more than $300, to make people think twice about not complying. So it is-
I wish that were true in Fall River, but if you ask the clerk, and I don't know if she's here already or not, but we have had ordinances that have a civil penalty, and people don't come in and pay.
Right.
And then there's nothing you can do. And it becomes frustrating, because I wish people did take it serious, and once you hit them in the pocket $100, they're going to realize, okay, we can't do this. In this instance, quite frankly, it's that you're not going to have the stores having these types of bags, which leads me to how are we going to let all of the store owners of Fall River know about this law and when it comes? And that would be to Ms. Sahadi, what's the cost of sending out a mailing, letting people know? Do we put it in the paper? Nobody really buys the paper anymore. I mean, I think it's a great ordinance, but I have a lot of questions.
Yes, so certainly. So noncriminal violations, as Lauren just indicated, would process through the same mechanism, which is through the city clerk's office. Corporation counsel is here today, but I would believe the hearings would go through the hearing office and go through the law department here within the city for any hearings or appeals that would occur. As far as the education, that would be something that the administration would have to work on. You're right, all types of media, whether it's social media, you know, WSAR, the newspaper, there would have to be an education process. A number of communities, as Mrs. Goldberg's had, has indicated, have implemented this ordinance in their communities, and it is all about education and letting the store owners know so they can wean down their inventory of single-use plastic bags and be able to stock their store with some other alternative, whether it's a biodegradable bag, or whether it's a bag that is paper. And it would be, as Council Vice President PM Libbey-Laboe indicated, it would be a timeframe. So the 180 days, six months, could be something reasonable in terms of the notification. But the interim city administrator is here, so he can speak on behalf of the mayor if you'd like, as well as corporation counsel, if you would like to bring them down.
Okay. Then to give them seats here, I'll go over there.
No, no, you're good. I'll just move the names. If I may, there's actually a process right in chapter 40, section 21D, and basically people have the, either they need to pay the city clerk, or they can appeal in court. So you can create a local appeal process, but, you know, we'd probably put it into an ordinance so that we all knew what the rules would be.
Perfect, thank you.
Madam Chairwoman?
Excuse me. You've been vaccinated.
Just on that point of-
Yeah?
Attorney Goldberg, to that point, where we have some fees that constantly get overridden by the courts, does it make more sense, or what would the process be if we did draft the fees into the ordinance? Would they still have an appeal process after that to go to the court?
Counsel, I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Did you, did you hear me or no?
Maybe most of it.
Yeah.
So fees and fines, I would say, are two different things, and things that should be looked at separately. With fees, they have to be reasonably related to the cost of providing the service, whatever it might be. With fines, they're intended to be punishment for not complying, for noncompliance. So under state law, without going to court, without doing anything, the town has the ability to, sorry, the city has the ability to impose a fee, I mean, sorry, a fine, of up to $300, but you need to pick the number. So that's why this says 100, 200, 300. There is also an ability to go ahead and increase the number of warnings that are given, but ultimately, under noncriminal disposition, they don't comply, that's typically, it goes directly to court. For fees, that's a little bit different, so there's a few different ways to collect fees, and that can include adding the fees that needed to be paid to, changing it to a lien, collecting it with taxes, there's a number of different ways to deal with that. With these, with fines, it is definitely the case that up to 300 is it, and even the court typically will do only 300.
So I guess, my question was, I thought you had mentioned that we could include the appeal process to be done internally.
Right. Yes.
So I guess, I guess that was ultimately my question, because we've got fines that are currently outstanding, and then somebody goes to court. I think the trash bag fee, I keep saying fee, I mean fine, the trash bag fine, when we had pays your throw, a lot of those, you know, fines that were out there got kicked out when somebody appealed it in court. So that, I'm trying to figure out, does it make more sense for the city to have an appeal process internally as opposed to allowing somebody to go to the, through the court system? And if that's the case, if they're not satisfied with the appeal process that would be established in our ordinance internally, do they still have the opportunity to go to court?
Yes, yes, and yes. So you can design it to work, but it has to work within the framework of the general laws, chapter 40, section 21D, which lays out the timeframes. So you can create an appeal process that essentially gets started as soon as the fee isn't, the fine isn't paid. And I can show you guys, there's a couple examples from other towns. It is more work at the local level, but you do wind up collecting your fines more for them, in my opinion.
Actually, is that your clarification, Counselor?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Counsel Pereira, you still have the floor?
No, I mean, I agree. I mean, what Counselor Kadeem talked about is the problem that we had is that if somebody didn't like the decision internally, and they went to court, the judge would say, please don't do that anymore. There was never something that said, okay, you have to pay, because it was civil, so, you know, and to put a lien on the property, if somebody doesn't own property, then we can't put a lien on their property. And we put in these ordinances, but there's never a mechanism to make sure that people follow through. And I would look to you at, what do you see as something that we can put in this ordinance that clearly would make a person have to pay the fee or fine?
Finally, the answer to that magic question. I would be a rich lady. I don't know the way that there is to enforce, other than enforcing on a regular and consistent basis. One of the reasons that probably on the times you have gone to court is that they're inconsistent. So it really is a decision-making process about how much time and resources would be invested in enforcing the ordinances. And, you know, in some, in some communities, they'll say, this is the year of, whatever it might be, you know, we're going to enforce this zoning bylaw, every time we see it, it's important to us, we're going to, we're willing to go to court. So you really do have to make that decision about how, who will be assigned with enforcing it, and how that person reports it, and to who, and then what those next steps are. Madam President, I yield, Madam Vice President, to let my colleagues have the floor.
Thank you. Counsel Lee?
Thank you. So one of the questions that was asked that I had was, what agency would be responsible? And where would, and where would this funding go? Would it go to the general fund? And we do have some agencies that have enterprise funds, so I was, I was thinking, I was wondering if that would be employed in any kind of way, or would it be, just go to the general? So we're all clear, it's going to just go to the general fund on that. Recycled items, so this may, this may not be directly to this ordinance, however, this may open up a can of worms for other ordinances that we have, and we may have to have more conversation about how fines would be collected otherwise, because if, the whole purpose of this bag transition is to make the bags more recyclable, now we're opening up a door to items that, sometimes bags, especially bags that have nonrecyclable items in them, and then that results in fines altogether as well. So I think, I'm wondering if we, if we do pass this in its basic form right now, before we make any modifications, if one of the modifications we're going to have to make is what items are allowed to be recycled in these bags, or, or in general? I'm not, you know what I mean? I'm not really sure if we're going to have to open that as well.
So-
And my last question on that, I'm sorry, have other towns addressed this kind of issue?
So, the question of what can be recycled and how is an issue that a lot of communities are struggling with right now. I think part of the push for the recycling, I mean, for the use of other bags, bags other than thin film bags, is to push people towards using reusable bags, as well as to use more paper bags. So one way that a community can look at it is to try and encourage people to use their reusable bags. Again, is there an incentive for that, and what would it be? In terms of what's inside there, again, whatever the rules are with your recycling contract, those are the same rules that would apply. So if people aren't properly segregating the recyclable from the nonrecyclable, then, you know, that's kind of a separate violation that would have, that would relate to this, but it wouldn't be under that same bylaw.
Okay. In regards to just in general, getting, getting the info out there, the basis of this ordinance change was, we had children from schools come in here and talking about this, we have the other one for the balloons as well. I really think, and it's just like when I talked to Mr. Perry about composting, I really think our schools are some of the best agents to disseminate that information, get it into the households. I know we don't utilize churches for information like this at all, but it would be, it would be helpful to try to get to areas where people congregate on a regular basis, to get the information out, not just on SAR or the newspaper, but places where people are physically congregating would be one of the best ways to get that information out. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Counsel Dionne?
Yeah, just one question. In terms of the fine and being able to collect on the fines, if somebody has accumulated a number of fines, if they haven't gone to court, to have them dismissed, when they transfer or sell their property, don't they have to get a letter of good standing from the community? And if, and if they have any back fines at that point, you have to pay the piper?
So my understanding is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that fees, unpaid fees are collected in that way, but fines are a different type of mechanism. They're meant to act as a disincentive to do the thing. That's that issue in the first place. The good standing certificate, I believe, is just that you've paid your taxes. I think that's the only thing. And then there is a provision of the general laws that allows a community to restrict a person or from using a particular piece of land if there's taxes owed on that land, and/or to prohibit that, the person who owes the taxes from building on another part of the town. So that's something to think about in terms of the arsenal of potential options. Maybe you would find a way to collect those better in those circumstances.
And that we might be able to incorporate this into that. Thank you. I yield.
So Counselor Dionne, that is correct. So if it's a fee, right now, what we do is we attach the fee to the unpaid real estate tax bill. And then to go that step further, if you're going to look for a building permit or some other type of permit within the city, and you have unpaid taxes, those permits are not granted.
I would just-
That's just for a fee, though, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Attorney Goldberg, in the exemptions, have all of these items been challenged?
I don't believe they all have been challenged. There was initially, you know, concern in the retail community that they wouldn't be able to make this kind of a change, but I really think they're long past that. Certainly, it's not convenient for every business owner, but what this list represents is the exceptions that have come up. So, you know, you see that there's a, a bag to transport live animals, well, we are talking about fish, you know, so we're really kind of in the nitty-gritty here in terms of the exemptions. If there were other things that weren't properly covered, because you have the regulations that, or have authorization to promulgate regulations, one way to do it would be to make a clarification through there. But these are the things that we've heard from, from other clients, and that we've kind of included in other, in other drafts.
The only thing that I don't see in here- The only thing that I don't see in here specifically, and this might be for our city administrator, is who exactly is going to be doing the enforcement? It just says city throughout. I know in the other one, it actually says which departments.
Well, if I may, and I am speculating here, but I'm assuming code enforcement potentially could be one. I don't know if Corporation Counsel, you know, has anything to add as far as that goes, but I'm assuming, you know, code enforcement could potentially assist. I mean, you know, minimum housing folks. I mean, you know, John Perry, John Perry's.
If I may, other examples have included police officers or Board of Health.
So I think it really needs to say in here who is going to be doing the enforcing, because we often look back to our ordinances to find that out. And if it's not here, then nobody's doing it.
Want to check your ordinances for one second.
Counselor Pereira?
I think that this ordinance needs to say who's going to be responsible. We need to look at what are the resources we have to give this added work to somebody? And I think this situation is really, you're talking about the supermarkets, some variety stores, stores like that. So, you know, if they don't purchase the right bags to give their customers, then you can go after them. They pay taxes, whatever. But you can't go after a private person who got a bag in some other state that is not, you know, exempt or that they don't have an ordinance for. I'm curious as to New Bedford or Somerset or Swansea having them. I know Dartmouth does. But what about Somerset or Swansea? So if I go to O'Clough Market and get something, what do I do with the bag that they give me? I would bring a reusable bag, because I would know, but...
This is just for retail establishments? So you're fine, you would just throw it out like you normally would?
Right. But if I go there to buy meat, and that's the kind of bag they give me, then how do I dispose of it here?
In the trash like you normally would?
The same thing?
It's not recyclable, you'd have to put it in the trash.
The damage is a distribution from a retail establishment.
It's just retail.
So if you're just going retail, then obviously you have a way to fine or give them fee or fine.
It's, excuse me, Counselor, if I may. You've already highlighted the issues, though, of enforcement and collection. I mean, I think you have to go the route of an internal appeal process. I don't think it prevents anyone from challenging in court, but you're, you know, again, you can attach the property tax bills and whatnot, but what do you do if the person doesn't have property? You know, it's very possible if they don't have property, they're not coming in for building permits and whatnot, and, you know, maybe you can grab them there. But enforcement's definitely, you know, definitely a problem. Not necessarily unsolvable, but definitely an issue.
Are you talking about like a small variety store? Of them not complying? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I mean, you know, any retail, though. I mean, you could have, you know, you could have, you know, it is possible that you could have issues where, you know, you might not have. You know, I'm assuming we're always going to make the owner responsible, correct? And not necessarily the employees. But you could have some collection and enforcement issues. I think it's fair to say.
Not all variety stores are owned by the person that runs them. Some are rented. So, you know, the landlord's going to be responsible because the owner's, you know, there's questions there. I mean, I'd give it a shot and see what happens, because I really hate to see these bags flying around. But I think that we should table it until we get who's going to be responsible for, I don't know if it's going to be Attorney Ramsey's staff or Attorney Hawiak that's going to be the one responsible to hear the appeals. And if it is, then what other appeals is she hearing? How many hours does she put in? What's the financial impact of that? And, you know, who's going to collect the fee? Is it going to be the city clerk? I think adding that to the ordinance is good, because sometimes we have ordinances, but then we don't list who's going to be responsible for what. So I think that would be helpful.
Attorney Ramsey?
I guess, I mean, there are a lot of questions I have that don't necessarily pertain to, you know, the legality of this.
Attorney Ramsey, can you speak closer to the mic?
Sorry. The main question I have is whether or not this is really the right time for this. And what I mean by that is I'm aware that Governor Baker prevented the enforcement of any ordinance that existed in Massachusetts. I forget exactly when, but because of COVID-19. It became a problem when people were bringing in reusable bags, handing them to the cashier to then put their groceries in. I don't know if the order has now been repealed, but I'm not, I mean, I just, I wouldn't sure if the council even considered whether or not this is the right time to have something like this. Plastic bags have become much more prominent as a result of COVID-19. So have we considered delaying this until we see where we are with COVID-19?
So we have a sixth-month implementation on here. Attorney Goldberg, do you know of any cities or towns that have had issues with this that they've already had in place?
Madam President, the governor did have an order that specifically said that plastic bags were allowed for that period. I don't, you know, city solicitor would have to, Corporation Counsel would have to weigh in on what those difficulties are. My experience is that the governor's orders just preempted the town's ordinances and bylaws. And so during the time of the governor's order, it just wasn't implemented.
And when that governor's order is rescinded, then everything goes back to how it was?
I believe everything, every COVID-19-related protection is rescinded on March 20, I'm sorry, on May 29. There are some areas of relief that are related instead to the duration of the state of the emergency. So that's right now, people are targeting June 15. Certainly, changes could be made. The, you know, the governor's office filed legislation today to try and extend certain pandemic-related relief, but this wasn't among those.
Anything further? I'm sorry?
To the department, if you want to finalize this anytime soon, I would say the Inspection Services.
Code Enforcement?
That's correct. That's who you would have. And so it would just depend on which division of Inspection Services or Code Enforcement that you would assign or that Mr. Hathaway, as being the director of the entire department, would assign to do the enforcement. And then as far as the appeals go, you know, again, I would assume it would come out of the law department.
Could you repeat that, Mrs. Sahadi? Because I didn't hear a thing you said. Could you?
I'm sorry, we're sharing the same mic. I would assume it would be code enforcement. So it would come out of Glenn Hathaway's department as to who would do the enforcement. So it just depends on the type of store. It may be assigned to multiple people. So, you know, measures and weights might be assigned to those retail locations that they go to. It may be another individual within that department if they're assigned to, you know, the markets in terms of the inspections. And so I would think it would be done in conjunction with some of that same type of work.
That's fine.
Do you, your Counselor?
Yeah, I mean, my only thing is, I think that perhaps a motion to table and come out with who is going to be responsible, have that in the ordinance too, so that we know that. I don't know how long that'll take. If you can come back for our next ordinance committee meeting and talk about that. I'm not so concerned with the governor's, you know, feeling on that right now, because I think things are going to lift. And if the governor hasn't lifted, then obviously the ordinance won't go into effect, because the governor hasn't lifted it. But at least to have in there what that is in the appeals process, I think that would be helpful.
Madam President? Thank you. So I guess I have a few comments to make. One is that there's that 180-day implementation period. The second is that how this is implemented is more of a, you know, an administration-side thing, because you all may feel like it was best if X person does it, but you guys might look at the organization and say, okay, you know, Board of Health and this and that are the best things. So I think that the regulations part is perfect for that, because either you could use that to talk to the mayor's staff about what makes the most sense, and you could specify that. And/or, with non-criminal disposition, I typically would recommend the Board of Health, when it's their jurisdiction, the police, and a code enforcement inspector. So I think it would be fine to put all of those in, and then you all can figure out how it should be best implemented.
My suggestion, I think, would be, first of all, one thing I noticed, this is proposed to be under Chapter 26, which is the Environment section. I know other municipalities like Falmouth has theirs in the Solid Waste chapter, which for us would be Chapter 62. Personally, I believe this should be under Chapter 14, under Businesses. I mean, I know none of us want litter. We're trying to use less plastic. But really, what this is, is a business regulation against retail establishments. So I think it is proper to be under Chapter 14, not under Chapter 26 as proposed. And that would also be, I mean, I also think it wouldn't be the Board of Health. I think in Fall River, if this ever got implemented, I think it would be Code Enforcement.
I agree with you on the Code Enforcement. And my hesitation to put all three in would be that everyone would think the other person was doing it. We have definitely had issues with enforcement of our ordinances in the City of Fall River and the manpower to do those. So I would agree that would be Code Enforcement as well.
Yeah, if you want to look at, I have an index of Chapter 14, the Businesses articles, so you can look at it. I mean, it seems like it would fit right in with this.
Could you just read a couple of them that would be? Give us a general idea.
Well, you have Division III Pool Rooms and Bowling Alleys, Division IV Public Entertainment, Article IV Charitable Solicitations, Article VIII Hawkers and Peddlers.
Could you just speak into the mic? I'm sorry.
Dealers in Secondhand Watches, Junk Collectors, Junk and Secondhand Dealers, Yard or Garage Sales, Motor Vehicle Repair Shops. Seems like, you know, retail establishments would be, we could create a new article in there. And I think that's where it fits best within our ordinances.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's certainly up to the council. I do know in many communities, they actually just authorize the clerk to find an appropriate location for it. I think it does regulate businesses. I think it does regulate health issues. That's, you know, the fact that they're not able to be biodegradable creates this buildup. But ultimately, I don't think it even has to say which number should be, where it should be as a final decision. I think it's fine to say authorize the clerk to choose an appropriate space. And I would mention, especially with these code entities, they often have already assigned a location for bylaws of this nature, so ordinances.
Counselor Lee?
Yeah, I do think the language, even though we want to know, we want to know specifically who is going to be responsible for enforcement, I think having the language a little bit more unclear or ambiguous is actually to the advantage, because you will be able to then see what is the most appropriate way to go. However, once it's done, we need to know what that process is. Once that agency is chosen as to who's going to do what, I think we really need to know how that process is going to go. We need to make sure that we can follow that trail, because I think that's what happens a lot of times, is that we, the ambiguous language, we're talking about it now in another ordinance where, that we kind of lose our way because we don't have that direct line. So I understand that, like, it might be the best way to handle the problem, finding the appropriate agency. But once we do make that decision, I think we need to have a straight line of process. So tabling this and making sure that we have that language in there is probably, you know, the right way to go on this. And I wanted to make a point to Attorney Ramsey. I agree that we always have to be cognizant of what the governor's orders are, especially when it comes to COVID. And there may be more problems coming down the line with COVID. We never know. But I also don't think it should stop us specifically from having something in place once we are able to implement it. I think that we should still continue on with this, regardless of what's going on in the governor's office, at least that we have it ready and ready to go. So once we can implement it, it can happen quickly. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Anything further?
Thank you. Just in terms of the ordinance and the enforcement, typically ordinances and bylaws, if it's left blank, have a specific department that will enforce it. So typically, the Police Department and Code Enforcement typically will enforce all the city ordinances and/or bylaws, depending if it's a city or a town. But if we want somebody specific, I think it's important to make sure that we identify specifically in the ordinance who we want to enforce besides the Police Department or whatever our ordinances state. The only thing, I think the, you know, the general ordinance that's before us is something that I support and approve. The only thing that I would like to see added, as I mentioned before, is just an internal appeal process that we just discussed, because if we can get an internal appeal process and try to get some of these fines paid at that point, as opposed to going to the court system and, you know, wasting our energy and resources over there, and the likelihood of them getting paid during an initial appeal process is probably greater than going to the court a second time. So that's something I would just like to see added into the ordinance, without a yield.
So I make a motion that we table it.
Excuse me one second, Counselor. Attorney Goldberg?
I just wanted to point out that you do have a non-criminal disposition ordinance, and there is no enforcing officer identified. So we can add an enforcing officer here. My expectation is this is a one-time enforcement issue, because it's not likely to recur. What's probably more likely is that there's other types of ordinance violations where fines aren't being collected. So it may make sense to add that local appeal procedure to the non-criminal disposition ordinance itself. We reference it right here in the ordinance draft that you have in front of you. And I think that's probably the safest place to do it, so that you don't have to go through this again with respect to who's the enforcing authority.
And that's the Chapter 40? I don't know, that's Master of Law.
This would be in, Chapter 40, Section 21D, talks about who's the enforcing person. And in your non-criminal disposition bylaw, that's where you usually find a kind of default enforcing person, so that you don't have to work it out. And then you can add names or add enforcing persons if you want to in an ordinance. So I do think you'd start off by amending the non-criminal disposition ordinance, adding the definition of enforcing authority and adding a local appeal procedure. Because those two things will apply to more than just the thin-felt plastic bags.
I agree. So you would put both of those in the non-criminal disposition ordinance?
Yes.
Anything further?
Motion to table?
Second.
So let's know. Could you just explain, I'm sorry, Counselor, So let's know, could you just explain, I'm sorry, Counselor, if those two items are being done in the non-criminal disposition ordinance, I'm just curious what you're tabling this piece for?
I'm tabling because she's got to add other things to the ordinance that have not been added, that we have requested that she add, how all of the, how the...
Internal.
Fines or fees or who's going to implement them, et cetera, that that's in there. I've never had to explain why I want to table something, but I'll tell you, that's why. I think it should be in there. Let her come back in two weeks when you have another meeting, and she'll have those added into that.
I just want a clarification, Attorney Goldberg, are those things that Counselor is talking about, that items that, is there something besides these two items in the non-criminal disposition that we'd be amending in this ordinance?
The 90-day option, we would be removing. Obviously, we're just striking. I think we could add right now, if the council is amenable, to putting where it says regulations, we could say, and enforcing authority, and we could say that the code department or any other, any other enforcing officer has set forth in regulations, and then that gives you the opportunity to come back later.
Thank you.
If I could add just briefly?
There was a motion to table in a second.
I understand, Counselor, but I just wanted to make sure that they knew...
There was a motion to table and a second, so you need to take a vote on that. If the majority of you vote not to table, that's fine, but let's follow the rules.
Motion to table made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Lee. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call on the motion to table. Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Counselor Deon?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Pereira?
Yes.
Chair of Liberty Laboe?
No.
Motion carries.
Item six is a proposed ordinance for solid waste. Corporation Counsel? Okay. Attorney Rumsey, you had edited the ordinance for us, amended the ordinance?
Yes, I think, do you have the revised, or the proposed ordinance in front of you? It was, I have my notes here, from what was the original ordinance, the definition of the official city bag was to be deleted. Section 62-2, Section C. Seconds that in solid waste shall be collected only if placed in a bag and placed in a green cart, which would delete the official city bag.
So we have in front of us Sections 1 through 4, striking out certain pieces of certain sections.
Right, so what's your question on that?
Could you just explain the changes that you made to the committee?
Sure. What the administration wanted to do was, I guess, the ordinances had not been updated to remove the purple bags, essentially, whatever it refers as, the purple bags, which by definition is called the official city bag. So it was presented to me, suggestions to, you know, get rid of the official city bag definition, get rid of the use of official city bag in Section 62-2, Section 3. As far as the, my understanding, John, Mr. Perry can probably speak a little better than I can on this, but I guess shredded paper used to be recyclable, but isn't anymore, so there was a suggestion to remove that, which is 62-35C. And the final revision was on 6248, Section A, the enforcement shall be against the property owner. I guess there was enforcement issues when you tried to enforce against the generator of trash, so those are the four suggestions that were being made.
Is there anything from the council, from the committee? Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made.
Second.
Motion adopted has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Deon. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. Thank you. And item seven, the last one, what needs to be lifted from the table?
Motion to lift from table.
Motion to lift through the table, from the table by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Deon, it's the balloon releases, and it is the draft ordinance that Attorney Goldberg K.P. Lawson sent to us. So, any motions?
We seek to motion to pass this through first reading.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Lee. I need a second for discussion, Counselor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Deon. Discussion, Counselor Ferrer?
I think it's the same thing. In this one here, the article may be enforced by any agent of police department and/or any city health department through lawful means, but I think it should be through code enforcement, that that be changed, code enforcement included, but not limited to non-criminal disposition. That's the only thing. I think you need to tweak that the same way you do the other one, do the same thing of where they're going to be enforced, who they're going to be enforced by, who the appeal is, and what the, you know, what the fines are, and I think they're both good to go.
So what I was trying to say on the table was, for the last one, if you are changing the other ordinance, correct, you don't need to do it in this particular ordinance, because that is a blanket for all of the ordinances, correct?
Madam President, what would happen is we would, because if there was a decision that we wanted this person to be the, these people to be the enforcing persons, then it may be, we could do it two ways. We could delete this, this provision B in its entirety, and we can go and change it in the non-criminal disposition, saying it's going to be enforced by code enforcement, police, or any other official designated by regulations, something like that, or you could just, you could use this definition. In fact, this is the more specific, apparently, portion that I think you were looking for in the last, in the last ordinance.
Correct.
But I just know that our health department isn't going to be the one enforcing it, so if we know who the proper enforcer is, you know, just like on the other one, I think if whatever you do on the other one, Attorney Goldberg, to do on this one, so it's the same enforcement, then I think they're both ready to go.
Wouldn't this be litter enforcement?
Say that, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't the proper enforcement agency be in litter enforcement? Shouldn't it be treated similarly to litter?
I think that it would, but that's not my decision.
Can you speak into the mic in front of Attorney Rumsey, because I can't...
Yes, I'm just, I would suggest that litter enforcement would be responsible for this.
Littering enforcement? Suggested litter?
He's suggesting that litter enforcement would be of the appropriate provision here.
And the department that that's in is?
I think that's probably also...
John Perry's?
I would assume, yeah.
DCM does litter? So then we'll put DCM on this one, just so that you know.
Yeah, it's certainly not code enforcement.
No.
It wouldn't be health department either.
No, it wouldn't be health.
I think it's, I think it actually indicates the police department, but I'm not positive on that.
It does.
Litter, it does, correct?
What, what did you say? It would be what?
Litter is under the police department.
I think police department's got better things on their mind than balloons. I think litter would be good, too.
That's what's there.
Well, wherever it's going to go, I just think it needs to be in the ordinance. Ordinances need to say how we're going to follow through on making sure the ordinances are adhered to, and that's a problem that I think we have in the city. We have ordinances, and then there's nothing else. With that, I yield.
Anything further from the council? Entertainer motion?
Motion to table?
Motion to table made by Counselor Pereira?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Lee, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn made.
Motion adjourned made by Counselor Lee?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Deon, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.